Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. To all the students that are here this evening, my name is Timothy Crumley, the president of the Monticello Central District School Board. A particular line on your piece of paper. The other line on your piece of paper, any board member in the meeting can sign that for you. So when the meeting come up and any board member can sign your piece of paper. Up here, left, why you're here. Please silence your electronic devices. Motion to adjutant table. Led by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So, order Dr. Evans, any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda?
You're at it this time, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Motion to adopt an agenda as is, made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So, order motion to approve minutes. Twenty-three, led by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So, order, thank you very much, everyone. Mr. Bell?
Not being able to get the best. Today being, what did they say? We got a great, we didn't get any better. They made it a, it's a more important setting. Their exit movement was very good. It was well there. And there's, 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 actually, there's, there's, actually, there's. Scotty Dance, we can make sure that this is, but it personally, right? So, the, there's, we can go out there and take care of it. There's, 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 there's. It's simple, it's a lot of work, we basically, it's a lot of dance. But first, thirty, I think, for, we can, you know, speaker, there's a, we're, we're, we're. Right, there's even first, the musical, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we. If we, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we. And then the senior classes, currently selling, discount for fifty dollars. This currently, they, 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 they.
Well, mine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Um, that was sponsored by presentation. Uh, I came from a board this evening, I came, just to present this, by Dr. Redd. Thank you.
So, I was checking to figure which side it was.
Somebody in the background is here tonight. Do we also have a budget presentation? Uh, Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. Uh, before I turn this over to Ms. Vela and the other administrators, uh, just a general update on the state budget earlier this week, uh, the New York State Senate, the New York State Assembly adopted what are known as their one-house budget proposals. These start to give us some, you know, final shape to what a potential state budget will look like, including our aid package for next year. Uh, I have shared with the board a pretty detailed analysis from Rural Schools Association. Uh, and I believe that the New York State School Boards Association sent something out yesterday afternoon. Uh, the reason why the one-house budgets are important is because if both houses approve something in their budgets, that is what they kind of go to the governor for to negotiate. So, there's a couple unknowns yet for us in this budget, uh, that are in the one-house budgets that are important. First one is that both houses rejected the high-impact tutoring foundation aid set aside. For our district, that's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the governor had as part of our aid package. Uh, what the Senate and the Assembly are saying is, give school districts latitude on how they can use that. Uh, in our case, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we don't know how that's going to shake out yet. Uh, and another critical piece, uh, for our district is that, uh, starting next year, the State Education Department will be given monies to conduct a study on the foundation aid formula. I think you may recall that last meeting or meetings before, uh, the foundation aid formula, let's still using two thousand census data, so twenty-three-year-old demographic data to make, uh, foundation calculations for school districts. So, that, uh, will be important in the years moving forward. Uh, another, uh, thing that came out in the single-house budget that we, uh, don't know yet, that financial, potential financial impact on the district, uh, is that in the Assembly's one-house budget, uh, there is a proposal that, uh, for school districts in Sullivan County, that they provide, uh, late bus runs for private school students, uh, in their own districts. So presently, uh, we are required to provide a transport, a school day transportation for private school students. Uh, this proposal, uh, in the Assembly is exclusive to Sullivan County, uh, and that school districts in Sullivan County, if it goes forward, uh, would have to provide those kind of late runs, if you will. Uh, so that was included in the budget. Um, led by Assemblywoman Dunkler, uh, and my colleagues and I will be meeting with her next week to, um, talk about that further as to what do you think. So, I'm just giving these to you because there's still kind of some gray areas about, I mean, revenues and potential expenses that might be on the horizon. Generally speaking, uh, both one-house budgets are very promising with Monticello Central District and I think many districts across the state. But, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Vela, uh, who will present, uh, kind of the, uh, not the final budget presentation, but maybe the penultimate budget presentation for the year. Ms. Vela?
Dr. Evans? So this evening, we have a large budget presentation. Usually, this is broken into two parts, but the number gets scheduled up, what we could adopt, we have to combine them. Tonight, we're going curriculum and staff development, people personnel services, summer and special programs, BOSI services, staffing, general support, distributed benefits and district-wide expenditures. So, we start with, uh, we try, we be as transparent as possible as our whole board makes the final decision of any budget that will be presented to the public for our approval since May and the first. First up, presentation is curriculum and staff development and.
As you can see, we pretty much rolled over our budget, uh, given that I don't have a lot of time in the department yet, uh, to really make an evaluation of where we need those expenses to buffer down. So, we're decided to just roll and then I'm meeting with my team, we're gonna next, uh, week or so, to see exactly where my needs makes adjustments and then we will present adjustments to the board and the, for, usually.
My next up is personnel services, we have to present that. We have Michelle Boyd, Director of Personnel. With, now, taking over the, we think, it's a strong, you can, yes. Last, there are any additions, notes here, or any, any, or, or, or? Also, we have lots of, uh, chapter books, projects, budget, there'll be a lot of people's. Might just, uh, we, there's, but it, it's, 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 yeah, the, the.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have summer school and special programs. That's named Hill, we present that for everybody.
I'm sorry, sir. This is just for the board's announcement. Any questions from the board regarding summer school special programs? Thank you very much, Mr. President.
This slide is the first page of the BOSI's budget. BOSI's budget, um, pretty much remain the same. There's slight increases and decreases at first page. Terribly, uh. High there, but on the second page, is where you'll see the majority of the increase, and that's in the alt, alt education, high school program over there, they had a very large tuition increase. On top of that, every time. Sixty, sixty-five, sixty-five. It was, that. Overall, it's pretty much, uh, awesome, ten, ten. Something because the, um, change, it's, 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 child, it's, 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 education, each, each, regardless. We'll, we, the, the first tuition, BOSI's themselves, they said that, uh, this was reduced, and after, once, when I remember, fifty percent, we always said, that's what the, the, we know all of our seats, so we, all of our seats. Third page of the BOSI's budget, um, is, library, BOSI's, and, uh, computer-assisted instruction, and I don't really know who's there. Next up, we have general support, undistributed. This is really central office expenses, um, including our insurance, our AOPs, um, any refunds on bill property taxes, and we are not asking for any increase, owes this upcoming school year. Moving on, employee benefits. So, this is where we were seeing, um, about a million-dollar increase. There's a slight increase, employees and teachers' retirement, social security is based on salaries, compensation premium up, and the largest pieces, that insurance for a couple people. I did a memo, I read the, your, um, issues, premium salary, reaching between twelve, fifteen percent, I think, raise. Uh, period, it was June, period, through December, so it's already out of the, 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 of[1484.08] This is seventeen eighteen, our open is to try about eight percent. We went from twenty eight hundred ninety two students down to twenty six sixty two this year. It's interesting. Charge to the point. The next slide just shows it by building, so you can see each building, which is is pretty stable. And there's all down. And anything that has to drive the ice above. I'm all reduced, I lost my fingers, I don't know. Okay, last slide. Last slide is the budget calendar. Uh, April seventeenth is the deadline for voter initiated propositions to be placed on the ballot. And it's the deadline for submission of petitions for board candidates. Twenty first is the final legal date for board adoption. Our goal will be adopting the budget on April eleventh, as our meeting goes two days after the final legal term. Three pair of budgets to. On work, our meeting the twenty seven, budget hearing is May fourth, and the annual meeting of budget board is May sixteenth. One more, um, calendar item I'd like to bring up this time. Is I would like to have the budget committee meeting to discuss the final budget before April eleven. And I was hoping that we could do a march target. And at the same time, I have a building committee meeting, because we get to our paper, architects. I have. Our project committee meeting is very long. Anyway, we have the R F Ps that need to be reviewed. March thirtieth is good.
Well, since it's me, uh, budget, me, uh, yeah. There's no need for, there's no need for. That works for everybody. What? Ready? Thirty. For thirty it is. But yes, rather than there being no main first, then for thirty, rather than. There is budget made first. Uh, I'm sorry, the capital project committee there.
Thank you. Any other final questions just for? And answer money.
That's our, that's our two bits.
September thirty twenty three, that's to spell all of them. We got. There's nothing there.
And I would like to point out in public on May fourth is that public hearing where public comment can be heard, questions can be asked. And things of that nature on uh, May fourth is the open budget hearing. Any other questions regarding budget? Possibly, how to reduce past sizes. So there's modest increases going up from like. Average past size of sixteen, average size of seventeen, or eighteen. They still stay under twenty for the most part. They're all, they're still all under twenty. On average. Some, I average, some. That was a specific strategy, that was in the S two grant, was to reduce past sizes. Uh, questions? Thank you very much, everybody. Right, on uh.
Um, I'd like the motion that we um, we forward with action, the consent agenda, consent agenda. Um, item C one to M two.
For interestee discussion. All in favor? Support, very, very, very. On that, let's down to information proportion discussion, so for round eight. Bye.
I think the change that I think here, yeah, that's. And uh, for problems for the three, I mean. Two thousand, uh, what's hearing, party, running around, if one thing actually means. I mean, yeah, I got, it's getting bigger. Hi, everyone. We uh. Uh, it's. So, that's why, it's very, very happy, so. There are no, well, it's been a happy. Uh, next day, so yes, very, very happy. But the slide is. Not this, and right here, it's not. And uh. I need to be. One, maybe it's. Uh, so. So, maybe. Uh, so. Should be. I. So, I might tell. Three, two, one. Can I jump in, it's up next?
Alright.
Can I, or can I just jump in?
I don't have a report, so. I didn't know if anybody realized, because I was passing the senior class around. The cards that they're selling in Monticello are fifteen dollars, the other school are selling them for twenty dollars. So Monticello is selling the discount cards, five dollars cheaper. And the kids are actually getting, I think, um, seven dollars, seven dollars per their class trip. And having a senior graduate last year during the COVID years, I think it's been a little thin for them to be able to do fundraisers. So if anybody can really support them, it would be a great opportunity. I've already bought cards, shirts, but it's a really great deal. Stuff that's on there, a dozen and a half bagels for a price of a dozen. You have half a dozen free, I'll pay for the fifteen dollar card alone, it's a little bit. So just want to put that out there, that fifteen dollars versus twenty, so it's a really great deal with the kids to sell. Sorry, sorry, get off my soapbox, sorry, sorry. No, I also attended the uh, the P T S O meeting too. And the one thing that came, I want to add to that is, um, volunteers have a lot of phenomenal ideas, they think they want to do. But they need volunteer, so if you have children in the high school, um, just keep those uh, meetings in mind. They want to do some wonderful things for our kids and. Uh, if I knew when the next meeting was off the top of my head, I would throw it out there, but uh, very informative, great ideas that they just need help. So if anybody can volunteer some time, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful group, they've got wonderful.
I'd like to say that I bought a shirt to support the seniors and that goes towards their prom and uh, very excited, I shared that too. Uh, in addition to that, I would like to say that when I picked up the Democrat and I saw Gianna DeMaio, Aliamoto, and we also have Shania, uh, who is. Jenny, Jenny, okay, sorry, thank you, Jenny from the block. So what's really nice is that, uh, to see that they're the Solomon County Democrat All-Stars. Fire, it's just terrific to see, congratulations and again. Yeah, that director, that likes, it's just cute. So I, I have to say thank you, everybody, congratulations. That's it.
Um, also, we have their first meeting, which is first. I'll be here. Yes, we've never come out. And also, I think about which. For the five, not just starting to why students are in charge, maybe the fact that we're, after the future, your future part. I found out about that the next day and I stopped that. Thank you, I was kind of like, it shows I actually. Yeah, I ended.
But, um, I don't really have too much to report since the last meeting. But Dr. Evans, when he went to the district conference, did run into, um, Dave Hart friendly, uh. Super eval salesman, uh, he's getting, uh, one of his representatives to get in touch with us to set up a tutorial session. I'll reach out to you guys via email to see what best works for everybody. I think the night of the meeting, um, I don't want to blow the hostage for that process. I'll see if I can't get him to come in either early, early, or if we need to do a different day. But I'll get a consensus, once I speak with him, I'll get a consensus, see if he's actually available. Or should I, you guys, just, yeah, that, but that is uh, coming down the pipe. Thanks very much, everybody. Big monitor director. Any questions or comments regarding reports that we got? Just rather. Yeah.
Other. So, I think the material is talking about, um. Which is that they are in the, if you want, since these are really, uh. Monument changes that are going to be happening. My question is, um. And there means the first innovation. Instead of just. Let's help the people, it's another. So, I mean, are there needs, this is kind of a lot to really. And I can't help, I just find out. It's so nice for some. We just tell them about what, what's, what we have. And it's not how I see it, there's, right, maybe, I see there's some things that are, this is a good question. I don't, I don't know what it talks about, um. And the basic idea is we're going to get the knowledge and, um, the justice, so this. I don't know what it means to me, to me. To just acknowledge things like that, just that the details, details of it, I'm not here, um, on what this is about, I just. I just, I just, it's very sharing, and I just, I just, like, you know.
So, uh, the district is required, just for everyone's reminder for everyone, district is required to do a district conference number by a release. Because of its uh, target district status, and you may recall that the middle school had been identified. Or in particular departments of, uh, academic students, not alien, that, uh, same test. Uh, and so every year, uh, throughout the year, the D C P many meets, and you already pointed out, it's Riley, that it's the stakeholders, they meet once a month. Normally, uh, and they ultimately revise and monitor the expectation of them. So the next plan is probably coming up in June. Typically, the state requires us to submit that updated plan to them, I think by August first, or maybe July first. Sometimes, sometimes December first. So right now, you're in the kind of last, entering the last quarter, twenty two, twenty three, D C P. So whatever strategies are being worked on, and here, you're really coming out of that last. So when the D C P comes forward to the board, the board does act on it. But that's certainly an opportunity time for the board to raise questions about what's. Now, as it relates to this report in ten right now, uh, I hope this part of it, this device.
I guess I'm just gonna, what, what section are you representing? Shania, I think, I, 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 I. But, I think it's important, I, I, I. Has, uh, and I have, it's, uh, so when I look, I just, uh, when, when I, I read a, on the website. About a, the writers, the street, and they were talking about, um, their permit, the, like, giving, the summary, about. And so my question was, if you play a concept, you analyze, understand, you change, and think about this, take that measure, and you go, yeah, I'm just. So instead of basically judging, judging and challenge abilities on tests. To all of them, to, instead of, uh, ju- judging is to just, they're putting tests, test the, or venturing their quality, mastery, uh, and identity instead. Not to be said, but you're putting that in that primary, uh, design that way, since we done it, it's that way. Uh, it is, the work that comes out, whatever you understand. So, I'm saying, it's to me, they're, they're expressing this, this whole, of the system that they have. And then when it's saying, you're not going to be teaching, you're not going to be, uh, you're going to be, then to wait, to choose to be done. Right, when this is, we're. But instead of teaching the way we use teaching, they are going to spend less effort on teaching to test. Respect for effort on strengthening things, students' identity, and they're looking at their, um, their way, and they, they, they. It's just, uh, that's why I'm speaking out of it. And, and that's, it's happening, um, I'm just saying for details, but everything is, that's, that's here, and, so right here, I just find out that. So we think that you all have something to carry about from that book, it's something that. But we're, after our, the plan, we're, 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 we're. Uh, yeah, we're, 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 uh, and now that we have a new, we're there, they, they, they're, 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 she, we're starting to speak, it's, we get, and one of the things that we're, we get, is, sure. Um, it's reading this book that, it was meaning something, but I guess, I think right now, it's more just about knowledge and information, and understanding a little bit more about diversity that. That's, 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 that's. But nothing is changing. And around that, we're just, we're just, we're just. Shh.
this, uh, 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 right, right, step, uh, 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 that's, that's, uh, right, uh, 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 I, um, this idea, I think, we have been successful, but, by, by, in that, uh, we're, 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 you know, that researchers' dollars, we're learning, these researchers, they're taking this way, they're like, buying it, not like researcher, outsider researcher, so, it's, 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 it's kind of like, uh, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not seeing, that's why people, they should put, like, it, it's the same, it's, it's, what's your way of learning, it's just reading in another way, another way, uh, to begin, it's the same.
A lot of it is, is really what the Equity Task Force makes of what the authors are calling for and determining how it applies to our local community, right? So, it's not necessarily adopting in whole, but this book is calling for what the authors are calling for, but it's really examining, right, which, these authors are saying, well, we're diverse communities, or there's, or even there are these disparities and outcomes, here's something different. It's, it's really on the Equity Task Force to kind of make sense of that and say, okay, so, maybe this will work here, or maybe this won't work here, or, look at this, and, or that, or, maybe we should, so, we can certainly, you know, if you want to copy the book, we can do that, but, but we have, we have, we have, but I think that's, as it relates to street data, that's, that I'm understanding, is how it needs to be utilized here.
Uh, I, uh, 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 so, my, my introduction, uh, 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 teacher, this introduction, does that mean that, uh?
It's, 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 it's,
well, 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 this, this, this introduction, does that mean there's gonna be more harm in this book? Since it's just an introduction, stop it, you're, 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 no, not a one.
Or, it was a new teacher orientation, uh, so, we can find out.
So, I'm asked this, my community research, and this is what I found, that, I demand all the high school teachers, we knew that, we know that students begin to develop racial identity, and, 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 as, 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 by the time they reach us, there is much socialization and learning that needs to be undone. Texturitagen is made to seamlessly embed the social justice forms that need, that is needed to be undone, to begin to make this right. I would like to know what that means to have things undone, when it comes to young heads, pre-K, and saying at the time, like, you're in middle school and high school, that there's so much that needs to be undone. You've already got to take it back. I, I would really like a statement on that, and there was, there was more to it.
We can get a statement, if I may, I'm just going on what you referenced there alone, and I'm assuming it's from the book.
Yeah, it's fair.
Um, my understanding of that statement, or, as I understand, you've just read, is that students begin to develop some identity, or sense of identity, as early as pre-K, where you've just read, I don't disagree with that statement, I haven't done the research, I've read the book, but that's entirely possible. And, I think the second part of that statement was, by the time they reach high school, middle or high school, there has been socialization, conditioning, something to that effect, that, um, requires them to think about what that conditioning has been, or what they believe their identity at that point, that, well, I don't think it's about undoing their identity, I think it's a critical examination of what they feel their identity is in, in, among their community and their peers, having not read the book, you know?
That, 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 about their identity, and, and, socialization, right? Uh, today, I was kind of like, huh, and then, down here, it's, uh, 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 and, 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 uh, 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 a, a, a whole bunch of other things that are just a little social ch- I just like to know, like, what we're doing for this book, and I'd really like to see copy of this book, how it's being implemented, in the classroom, in future plans of this book, anything related to this, uh, the same thing that, that Ashley's talking about, you guys talking about undoing somebody's identity, I, I think, probably, uh, as a parent, as a community member, I think that we should all, really, fix this, we, we, we think, uh, 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 uh,
It's definitely a, a, a presentation, because there wasn't actual work done on this.
I saw the whole video, it was like, three minutes, probably just a quarter as well, but that was just basic.
Just, we, we, the materials, uh, 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 uh.
That's what I just said, I didn't see it.
My question and hesitation with that is that, with the airs of, I would like it not to be a gateway for Marxism, because I don't want to see the de-evolution of what we have established, I want to respect everybody, but I don't think you have to rip it down to the cinders and burn everything, so I really like it not to be a gateway to Marxism.
Question regarding any direct.
Uh, I, uh, 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 that'd be going out to the, 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 uh, that's part of my report, do you mind waiting, just sort of do my, 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 I was, I was going to, I was going to, yeah, that's, 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 that's.
Alright, so that means we're good on direct reports at present, all, they're ready?
I have one more, uh, words, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure if this is the right time, or, or not, but I just hear that, we're gonna start black football, but yet, do we have enough money, as we heard the last meeting about how bad the soccer uniforms are, see that?
My understanding is we're trying to survey, for interest on black football, with the intention of, possibly, if there's some interest, possibly beginning it in twenty-twenty-four.
Well, well, we'll have enough money to cover the new uniforms, as we heard the last meeting, the girl soccer team, how terrible those uniforms are, I'm trying to understand, the uniforms go from varsity, down to JV, down to modified.
Uh, no, not always, depends on the, the inventory, depends on the quality of the uniforms, and, and, you know, very often, it doesn't go all the way that, that, you know, so, modifies don't typically get six-year-olds with uniforms, it can, some schools do that, but I think what we talked about was varsity, JV, modified having a separate uniform cycle, upside.
We're good on direct reports? Alright, moving on, um, uh, policy committee memo, there's, on that, this time, but we do have an update, talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley, so, the policy committee will be meeting again on April eight-eleven, at five-thirty, five, five-thirty P.M., um, we'll think on some more, uh, policies that come close to this book, potential revision, uh, tonight, the board will be conducting a second reading, uh, and, uh, consider adoption of provisions to policy forty-three-twenty-seven, which is around homebound instruction, as well as, uh, instruction for students who are on auto-school suspension. Uh, this policy update comes to us from the New York State School Board Association, and they have carefully demarcated students who are in homebound instruction, so thank the students who are home or, as, 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 due to some condition, as opposed to, uh, differentiating from the students who are on long-term suspension, so this is the way of some recent, uh, work by, uh, changes in the state regulations around homebound instruction, in general, though, just a reminder that next year, uh, a requirement for homebound instruction, and students who are, uh, receiving instruction out of school, because they're suspended, is increasing, so, right now, grades, uh, seven through twelve, that needs to be ten hours a week, has been increased to fifteen hours a week, uh, July one, for elementary students who are on, on auto-school suspension, for homebound, it's going five hours a week, to ten hours a week, so the changes in this policy reflect that, updated with it. Uh, and then, lastly, uh, I believe, I don't want to steal any of Ms. Carlin's thunder, uh, but we are, uh, aiming for a, uh, policy committee discussion, potential first reading on revisions to our parent involved policy, uh, those recommendations came to us from the State Education Department, following, this, uh, 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 that they did, uh, and we asked participants, respect that building leadership teams for, uh, PTOs to, policies, because the change in parent involved policy, it apparently, so, we went through those routes, and, uh, it's Carlin, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's.
Uh, it's only agenda, so, fuck that, we get down to the next one. Uh, correspondence outcomes, one outcome from our previous meeting, so, uh, agenda, uh, capital project update, Dr. Evans.
Uh, yes, uh, we just, today, and I apologize for not getting it onto the board agenda, but today, we received an update from, uh, Chase, regarding our, uh, capital project work that's going on. So, uh, the panels for the north side of the one-hundred, two-hundred wing arrived last week, uh, and they are beginning to install them, uh, now that we have some decent weather again, uh, there is going to be, uh, probably a change order coming on our, uh, new heating, uh, system, uh, that, uh, is not only in the one-hundred, two-hundred wing, but was extended into some of the other wings of the high school, uh, after having issues in balancing that, boilers, uh, they determined that balancing valves, we needed at the end of loops, uh, at three or four different spots, uh, we had identified, uh, spring break as the time to do this work, because we had to shut down, uh, the system in order to install them, um, this was something that, uh, you know, was not in the initial design, in terms of the balancing valves, but it is, you know, after repeated findings of the heat not balancing appropriately, and trade looking at it, and CPL looking at it, they determined that these valves aren't necessary, that's, I have you at this time, I don't have a potential cost to that, but, uh, it was not in the initial design. So, trade installed the new boilers, pipes and tubing that went out from there into the one-hundred, two-hundred, were part of the design by CPL, so there are controls, the balance.
That's actually static, separate, when you start running, you actually go, yeah, great.
It's not an automated, it's not an automated function. Set it, you get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if it was CPL's drawing, something they never, ever got close, it should have been there, because it's one of those things that you give yourself the adjustment, at the beginning, you don't finish it, say, oh, and then add the adjustment into it, that adjustment, the adjustment should have been built into the system from the get-go, because at the get-go, we're costing us X, and now it's gonna cost us X plus.
And, uh, the last thing I have, and Ms. Vela mentioned it earlier, uh, we did receive five RFPs, district orthopedic, and, uh, we'll be discussing those, the capital project.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans, uh, upcoming events, um, listed out, the agenda is upcoming events, uh, School Board Association, um, respect, School Board Member Workshop, uh, April eleventh is coming up, um, how the rate is there, uh, for anyone to see, agenda, community events are also listed, along with, uh, some links to, they should have been, uh, I think there were the Democrat, that nature, uh, that are students, that, uh, 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 yeah, questions, comments with the public. Right, ninety-second, forty-five seconds, we're testing them. Board of Education recognized value of public comment on educational issues matters of public interest, in order to commit fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules of government, will be administered by the presiding officer, please note, the first public comment period, forty-five minutes maximum duration, will be at the beginning of the meeting, period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting, either period may be extended by majority voting board, either public comment period is a time for public discussion, if necessary, the community member will be contacted, followed. If you wish to speak, place your name, email address, telephone number on the sign-in list, and hitting the topic of your comment, prior to making your comment, state your name for the record, identify any group or organization you represent, comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, each speaker may not yield extra time to another speaker, in order to extend the time of comment, no speaker may comment on or identify a particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his or her comment, all comments are being directed to the court president, or his nickname, and down to the petition, there to begin calling the court president, or the court, through all written comments, a memo placed on the agenda on the next meeting, under a base report, discussion, even before, before, yeah, it will be titled, correspondence document, will be a public document, thank you very much.
According to that, I think, uh, right now, let me do, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, 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 And I want to thank the Sullivan County Chamber of Commerce, putting together a very nice little book of, uh, Sullivan County businesses and school districts, it's different communities, uh, because it was very handy. And then lastly, I know, glad you're all here tonight, a snow day update. So, uh, we are, to be clear, we have no more snow days remaining. If we have any emergency closures at this point, uh, they will be for remote instruction. The principals and schools will be giving out, they have already the details about what those schedules look like, but it's more or less the same schedule, just live stream. It'll have some tweaks to it, but it's relatively the same day, how ready to think the middle school, high school are a little bit later, start time? For remote instruction. High school, middle school, they start the same time or an hour later? So, that's forthcoming. Um, but as it relates to Tuesday's snow day, because there is some misinformation in there. Uh, there was a state of emergency declared by the governor. We, however, still had snow days. If there is another event, now that we're out of snow days, where there is a state of emergency declared, and we're closed that day. We can appeal to, uh, state ed to have that day forgiven. We wouldn't necessarily have to go to remote instruction. So let's say, for example, I don't know, we have a tornado in May happen. Um, and we had to close down school or something, uh, if we're out of snow days, we could appeal that day back and not have this state. However, since we had a snow day on Tuesday, we still had available snow days, we can't appeal for that day. So I know some districts are out of days and they are appealing that. Uh, but for right now, we just, we do have to close again, and whether it's good next week's, we can go to remote instruction.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um, Vela, Assistant Superintendent Business Update. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
For practice certifications, there still needs to be the student that is in the high on grades. It's still, okay, we're talking about for actors. For practice, they're.
Yes. Restorative practices, in other words, that there's, uh, some type of, uh, restorative effort to, you know, help the student better understand why. Being punished, disciplined for what they did, and how to make things right again, to restore whatever relationships they may have severed with either staff or other students. Um, sometimes these are, you know, most commonly seen in restorative circles, which kind of groups mediation, it's a good example, counseling. As it stands right, I can tell you, as it stands right now, I don't know what to be considered, but as it stands right now, um, we can't mandate counseling. Strongly recommend it, we can say that if you attend X number of sessions of counseling, we may reduce your suspension. Uh, however, right now, we can't say, uh, you know, you're suspended for ten days, and you still have to get counseling on top of that. I have not, all I have is what I shared. That's a good question, so it can come in a number of different cases, so it could be wrapped into the state budget. So that could be by a person. It could be a standalone item that the legislature and the governor approves later date. It could be a mistress regulation change that Board of Regents would act on. In order for them to do that, there's, uh, series where they have to kind of present the change, there has to be a public comment period. And the Board of Regents is to approve the regulations. So, uh, you know, I guess the earliest thing could happen is if it's included in the state budget, that could be by a person.
And that's not what they would. Dr. Evans? Your second, please.
So this evening, all I have is the budget status, revenue status, claims auditor report, school lunch profit and loss for the month of January. Important stuff.
How are we doing with the budget compared to the same time last year, though? Are we, are we, are we still on keel, or we had to be behind because of this economy?
So certain items are costing us more than we had even budgeted, like for fuel, you know, we anticipated a higher rate, but, um, we actually lucked out because we awarded the fluctuating rate, so as the prices did drop, we saved money where other districts locked into five dollars and fifteen cents for the whole year, so. Um, it would, it could have cost us more if we went that route, so kind of glad that we decided not to, or I decided not to. And, um, so those things are, are costing us more, but I think, you know, we're, we're monitoring the budget, we're in good shape for the end of the year. I don't anticipate any, like, you know, prices.
Very much.
Thanks, so just to kind of dive a little bit more into, um, we're talking about before with the State Education Department and our plan. Um, so about a year and a half ago, the State Education Department, um, had been told that we were going to be able to complete targeting, monitoring review. Um, and this does to you, the fact that we receive quite a lot of Title I funding for our district. Um, and so this is kind of an audit, we don't like to call it an audit, but that's basically what it is. They look at several different indicators, sixty in all, uh, to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to do. So fifty-eight of those indicators have been completed and approved by the state. The last two indicators have to do with our parent engagement policy. Uh, and that's why I came to policy committee meeting, uh, in the past, and it also has been, um, at BLT meetings, because there are parents on the BLT committees. Um, I did check with the principals, and I've heard back from about half of them, and, um, verifying that, uh, policy changes were brought up at the BLT committee meetings. Um, and they have agendas to, to, um, show that, because we have to bring that to the state as proof that we've included parents in the policy change. Um, and so the changes in the policy are listed in, uh, in our newsletter this month. And another reason why that was done was again, just to notify the public, because it's a public document, that the policy does need to be updated based on the state's recommendations under this target monitoring review. Um, those updates are, are on the newsletter, so they're going to need to report them, if you, if they are. Okay, so basically, at this point, once the policy has been updated, and there's been a first reading and a second reading by the board. We'll then notify, uh, our parents at the community that this policy has been changed. And then annually, the second indicate, the second indicator that we're still having to do is annually, this policy has to be updated or re-approved, which you do at your meeting anyway. Um, and we need to make sure that parents have access to that policy at all times, which they do on the website and on the public meetings. So, uh, once we have finished all of that, I will leave this monitoring review with the state and get it submitted and put that up as, as being, uh, ready.
All right, whatever.
I mean, just everybody that's coming in. If they have OT and they're, uh, of an IP, then it's under the, uh, forty-four test program, so it's not in the general. Yeah, and I think we did an analysis several years ago, and found out that doing it this way is going to actually be cheaper, and if it was out here for students.
Um, I'd like to bring forth per consideration action items T-one through T-six.
Second on that. By Mrs. Gallagher, discussion. I'd like to take up to you, board. Uh, that would be the next motion.
Um, not to make a friendly amendment to this one. Um, I'll make a friendly amendment to, um, bring up for consideration action items T-one to T-three, and action items, uh, T-five and T-six.
Second on that, Mrs. Gallagher, discussion. All in favor?
Um, I'd like to, is there, did you discuss, or did you want me to? I'll have to bring it up first, I didn't know if you wanted to pass those first and then do.
Yeah, let's pass those first.
Okay. So, uh, there is no discussion, um, I'd like to move forth to have action items T-one to T-three, T-five, and T-six up for approval.
Second on that, by Mrs. Gallagher, discussion.
Um, I'd like the motion to bring up for discussion, action item T-four.
Second, if I missed a point, any discussion?
I would like to discuss the students who are suspended, that portion of this, um, policy. I, my, my issue is that I, I know where students are suspended, and they're on trial, and they don't do anything. And I just feel that we need to be accountable to these children who are suspended, not do anything, and I feel that if your policy would be, I, I understand that the way children are being suspended is changing at the state level. I don't know what that change is going to be, what it is still, and is there any, we can change this policy to kind of reflect the language that's up top. For example, like, this, this, we take records, um, they, uh, they, now, any time for instruction services, it's a complete, it's a destruction, destruction. And subjects for education services provided for districts. Um, administration to evaluate the suspension plan, and if that's, that, if students are trying to graduate and, um, things that are subject for instruction, approaches, and any former services, and this, or, transition, transition, practice. I just, I just feel we need to, for these children who are being suspended, because we put them, we know that more work is, we're, we're going through COVID, and now our children are suspended, and we're giving them a laptop, here you go. You're gonna meet your tutor two hours a day, and I know students, we're not doing that. So I just feel, I mean, I don't know how impressed you guys feel about this, and maybe through policy, we can change that and make sure that these children are receiving an education.
Your question is really revolving around the last page of the document, because everything else is going bound students. So the last page is really kind of what's going around, students who are suspended.
And I understand that the way that we're looking at it is, I think, I think that, and I understand, it's a very important view. But then we have these students that are out, for such a long time, and they're not doing anything, and it's a disservice, these children got educated.
I'm being careful to categorize it that way, that we're not doing anything to our students who are suspended, who are attending the, either the virtual or the in-person program. Uh, attendance is taken for them, and attendance is monitored while they're in that program. Um, so I, you know, some of that I don't know is, is always the case, is always true.
I know the student, right, that I'm definitely, that they go into this situation, and it's very, it's heartbreaking to see. So that's why we need to special.
I mean, I would say, but it clearly says that instruction happens multiple ways, so whether it be the student's home or by other locations, it could even be a private tutor. Um, but it just includes remotely as an option, so the student, in which you may be familiar, could choose other options in which to engage. So I don't know what the situation is, but I'm just saying that all these opportunities are available, I'm not sure what their limitations may be, but it also doesn't limit. It provides an op, it provides lots of different ways, and then situationally, I think that might make a difference, but in being fair to the person that you know, and keeping that private. I think what's important here is that we provide the opportunity for it to be done multiple ways, and we have to use each person's situation to determine what's available to them. And, but I don't think we want to rule out any certain way, because then that might be the only way that another person can benefit, is that what you're?
No, that's not, that's not pull out, but I'm just saying, like, you, like, it's on top here for a student who's on.
Yeah.
Homebound, that the district, that the district.
What you mean by up top, okay.
Which, which is right up here, like, I just feel like I've got children that are suspended, and there are some that will do wonderful, but there are those, some of those do not do wonderful, and those tend to be the, the children that, you know, need us the most.
Okay, so I guess my, maybe I'm confusing your concern, so you wanted to say something like, will be reviewed in both places as opposed to just one specifically?
Because it's only one section, only deals with the homebound, which is right, but I would, you know, but down here, it's so like, kind of, I, I, to, to me.
Well, look, this comes from the New York State School Board Association, and they want to give districts the latitude that they have according to state education law and measures regulations. So I think that's why they don't have that as prescribed, this is what they do for the homebound instruction, so they're, they're careful to kind of parse that out.
It needs to, yes, with our standard, when children are being suspended, make sure that they are receiving.
So essentially, we can adopt policy and then win, or, uh, policy.
Now, you have a, the board doesn't, you're, you could, uh, you could adopt the policy instead of that, revision, revision, naming policies instead of that, revision.
Policy is that's.
This, this came from the December twenty-twenty-two update, so. No. It should be improved sometime soon, because you have to change the regulations, and it won't seem to hurt that, but they're helping.
Right, right. I can make room for that.
And if I change, did it get, as you're saying, if it didn't burst?
Could be, yes.
I might have to change all again.
I would, if that, though, if that scenario played out, I would refer to the New York State School Board Association to give us guidance on that before we try to patch it up. We can still talk about this one.
Discussion. All in favor? On action plans, uh, Dr. Evans?
Yes, uh, I would like to, uh, welcome another member to our family, and that is Ms. Teresa Crumley.
Um, so, correspondents, uh, really, uh, they were actually up, up for events, and then we had questions, comments in public. I believe we definitely have Mr. Keller once again. Alright, Mr. Gallagher.